Once again, keep in mind that this was done just with the camera out there. When the system's actually in place, the system will be triggered electronically based on the position of the vehicle and also the speed. Once again, I think that's pretty impressive. Gives you the idea, the magnitude of the problem out there. Just to kind of back up a little bit, Lou's going to add some other video that he'd like to have you see. In 2005 and 2006, we had respective 31 and 34 accidents, 36 accidents at that intersection. 2005, four of those were attributed to red light violations. 2006, six were attributed to red light violations. And then we had eight and nine accidents in those respective years that were due to failure to yield, which would be subject to a further investigation for the attributed to a red light. That particular intersection sees 52,000 cars a day, Monday through Friday. There was a recent article in the Daily Herald with regards to the 10 most dangerous intersections in DuPage County, kind of backing up to something more locally to us. Route 83 and North Avenue sees about 200,000 cars a day, and they have 58 accidents there a year. Now, if you're looking at our 52,000 cars a day and 36 accidents a year, you can see with the traffic patterns as they are emerging in DuPage County, this is going to be an emerging location that definitely merits our attention and our effort to try to make safety a paramount here. So with that being said, I'd like to now kind of just conclude with one more video clip for you to see, and then we'll be more than happy to field some more questions from you.
Wanted to show you an example of what, when we talk about...
Sir, if you could use the...
Oh, I'm sorry. An example of, we talked before about the Citizen web portal and the ability of citizens to go on and actually look at their images. I think I can... No, I think it's coming. What do we got here? Oh, no, here we go. I'm sorry. So, we had queued up already a violation and a violation and a PIN number that would be put on the notice in the system. You see on the left, you see a vehicle, this is actually from a system that we operate in Colorado, but a vehicle on the left prior to entering the approach. Second photo, the vehicle proceeding through. These images can actually be clicked and, oops, where's my... Oh, sorry, there we go. Can actually be blown up and looked at by the citizen on the web if they want to. Third is the close-up of the plate that we discussed. Fourth, they actually, it's a driver liability rather than registered owner there, but we include that on the example here because you have, the city has indicated interest in having a front camera as well, but that front camera would not be to take a picture of the driver, but would be in the truck situation like we discussed, being able to pull the license plate off of the cab of the truck as well. Citizen can also go down and play their video, and we have that queued up. Actually, before I do that, the citizen, you can see the basic information, the plate, in this instance, it was a Colorado, the date and time of the violation here, the speed of the vehicle as it proceeded through the approach, the time of yellow, that was provided, which is obviously set by, well, in this case, I don't, Chief, I'm not sure if it's the city or DuPage County that does that out at North Wooddale and Thorndale.
It would be the county is actually the one that sets the speed limit.
And then actually, the red time of the violation, in this instance, this person ran at 1.13 seconds. The location. We can play the video associated with it. And this is the 12-second video clip that we discussed. So here, let me go ahead and get that started. You can see the light in yellow, goes red, the vehicle runs. Just to kind of... I was trying to try to stop it, I waited a little bit too long. It allows the citizen, their VCR-like controls on the bottom, so you can actually stop your video to see where you are when the light goes red. I think the real advantage of this 12-second video clip is it results in contest rates that are usually below 3% of the violations that are issued. It's pretty hard to dispute when you have a video of the violation that. I'll do it one more time. See if I can do a little better, yellow, red. Vehicle was actually a good ways back from the approach at the time of the violation. Moving back over to the screen, there is the ability on the website to link to the online payment center, in this instance. Same thing, letter and PIN number allows you to go in and pay your, make your payment online if you would choose to do that. If the city were to elect to want to allow people to request hearings on their cases, that can also be set up through a similar link on the web as well. So, I'll minimize that and be happy to take any questions.
Just before we go a little bit further, ACS, keep in mind, we've recently purchased new software for the city for our accounting system. That's ACS Springboard. It's an affiliate of ACS Corporation, so all the software functions will migrate and integrate with one another so that we can get maximum usage and the least amount of time as possible to track all our cases for the hearing officer and also for the finance department if people elect to pay for the violation. It's unfortunate that we have to use negative reinforcement to change behavior, however, that seems to be the only way to really get the idea across that motoring safety is important. Once again, our business practices are still open to discussion and formulation by not only the command staff, but also our line police officers, which are out there doing the job. And with that, be more than happy to take any questions on the program.
Alderman Shauky.
A couple, a few questions, if I may. About how many violations would you consider over a month or a day or whatever it is?
Well, we really didn't look at it on a day. However, we're looking probably initially around 350 per month.
And they have to be reviewed by a police officer?
That is correct.
What kind of time is it going to take? Do we have somebody that can sit down and go through these every day or once a week? Or how are they going to handle that?
Currently, what we do with an officer, we have several officers that are assigned to Track Guard. That's part of their regular duty day where they actually go on the web, look at the pictures, make the determination whether or not the citation has to be issued. The beauty of this, though, is this not, is not going to go before the clerk's, before a judge, through the clerk's office, it's strictly with us. And that's part of our job. And it's a lot easier to do it this way than they have to sit somebody on that intersection, try to cross over traffic, take a half an hour to write one ticket when we can work more efficiently and effective using technology.
Okay. Also, if when you're taking a picture of the trailer or the cab, or both, if we have front and rear, which one gets the ticket actually?
It'll be the cab. The majority of your vehicles that are running through here are freight haulers, and they're locally, they're located locally. One of the reasons why we set this as an immediate specification in need is because a lot of the trailers are from out of the country and out of the state. We want to hold the driver responsible, and that's the power unit of the vehicle.
Okay. And also, on a right turn on red, how long does a stop have to be? Is there...
Well, if you look at the law, you cannot proceed through the stop bar or through the intersection against a red signal, and really, there's a zero tolerance according to state law. Once again, that would be looked at, we would discuss that administratively within our police department, and we would set up a standard business practice as we do with Track Guard.
So they're not rolling through?
The law's pretty emphatic, and I can remember that I've gotten phone calls from quite a few people in our community about Wooddale and Irving with right-hand turn on red. And once again, you know, I mean, the law's pretty emphatic about this. You can't go beyond that certain point, but once again, that's something still to be set up with regards to our business practice.
Now, if the camera's taken down with a drunk or whatever it may be, matter of fact, it'll be right next to a gas station where people walking or getting gas can go over and fool with the camera. Is it up high enough so that somebody can't reach it?
Yeah, it's at a height similar to your Track Guard system, actually, probably, excuse, can you hear me? A little bit, a little bit higher than that, at least 12 feet off the ground. The manufacturer, the house of the system is GATS-A-Meter, and it comes in an industrial-grade secure housing. And so, it's literally bulletproof. And we do have a locally-based, who actually services your Track Guard system, a field service technician. Even though, even though this system is digital and can be checked remotely, we would still send someone on-site according to a schedule established by the police department to look for things like graffiti, whether anyone's tried to deface the equipment, et cetera.
One other thing that we're going to be incorporating with this is we're currently working with our other vendor with ACS. Once again, that's a hot camera all the time, and we're going to be feeding those images back to our communication center so that we're going to be able to monitor that intersection. So once again, if something unusual does happen with that camera, they're looking up, they're going to see what's going on.
Okay, and they'll see accidents too to respond to.
Right, and that's what's one of the actual advantages here. We're actually going to be expanding our public cams by one. We'll have this intersection pretty much under surveillance.
Now, you mentioned that you won't be charged enough if the camera's down.
That's correct.
How long does it normally take to get a camera back up if it's been knocked down and damaged?
We'll again set either contractually or in business rules, if the city elects to move forward, we usually would say on general maintenance items, within 48 hours or two business days. For something major, like a pole knockdown, it may take a little bit longer. We'd probably be willing to commit to a deadline in the range of 15 calendar days.
Fifteen?
Fifteen, if the, if the entire system were knocked down.
Yeah, that's, so if some truck hit the post and knocked the camera down, you're talking fifteen?
Knocked the whole thing down, because we may have to get an electrical contractor out then, et cetera. Again, we wouldn't charge the city during that time period.
Okay, and there are electrical hookups necessary. You mentioned you can rotate the cameras, you can make it east or westbound?
I think what the city is proposing is to do both the eastbound and the westbound approaches at this time.
For that 4,000, for the 4,099 fee?
That's per system, that's per system.
Per system?
Yes.
So we're talking about 10,000 a month then?
I think if you were to do the front rear, it's the 5,500 times two.
So we're talking $11,000 for both east and west cameras. Okay, thank you.
Alderman Tom.
My question has to do with the right turns. The pictures that are sent out, are they timestamped?
Yes.
You know, the digital...
Yeah, let me, I'll answer that question visually, if that's okay.
No, the reason I'm asking, because as Alderman Subak alluded to, about a year ago or so, I had gotten a ticket like that in Chicago.
Okay.
And I had stopped before I made the right turn.
Oh, okay.
Okay? And I still got the ticket.
Interesting.
You know, and pretty much was told, you can't fight these things because they're not really moving violations, you know, and you got to pay it. I mean, that's what I, at the time, that's what I was told, okay? But I had stopped at the red light, and I guess my concern would be, you know, kind of alluding to what Alderman Shauky was saying, you know, what is that time limit that you're supposed to be at a complete standstill before you make that right-hand turn? You know, when I, when I was, if I remember back when I was learning how to drive, they said when you come to a stop sign, it's tense, you know, it's a count of 10, basically. And I don't know if that's...
[laughing]
Well, I know it doesn't happen, but I'm just saying, that's what I was told.
As the chief was trying to indicate, you know, that speed, what we need to do is we need to look at what is reasonable, and we're talking about faster than a walk speed normally, and zero tolerance. And through the, throughout the past five years, when we implemented the Track Guard system, and we were the first ones in the state to get this up and running, we negotiated that, that time limit, and we actually gave the violators more time to stop. And so, when the chief is talking about, well, we have to look at this, we have to set this up, we have to see what's reasonable, we have to see what's defensible, and then we have to work with, with the vendor. It's a touchy thing, because it's going to be tailored to making certain that each violation is a good legitimate violation, and that's what we need to work on. But I don't think this is being done anywhere in the state except in Chicago right now, although Naperville is working on it. So we'll be working, working with the vendor, and we can throw some of these out, and we can look at that, what is reasonable. But that's, that's the big question, you know, how...
Well, yeah, I mean, it seems to me, if you come to a stop, it's, you got to do it at least a one, two, you know, a count like a one, two, you know? I mean, to me physically, they should, they should be stopped. And I, what you, what you showed here in the video, I mean, was pretty clear that there's a lot of people that, and I've seen, I mean, in real life, there's a lot of people that the light's red and they don't care, they just keep, if they see nobody's coming from the other way, they just roll right through it, you know, even though legally they're supposed to stop. So, I guess, yeah, that is going to, but I would hope that whatever you decide, that it is a reasonable, you know, reasonable period of time, and that, you know, it's not one of these where, you know, I take a picture here, and it's, you know, 10 o'clock, 10 point, 2/100ths of a second or something, and then, you know, 2/100ths of a second later, you know, they're clicking again, and they're saying, yep, you went through it.
Yeah, one thing I might add that may have been different from your experience with a different vendor, I might add, in Chicago, but, is that you will have the 12-second video clip, which is crucial for right turns, because you can actually, unlike a still image and then someone says, well, we know you didn't stop, you have a 12-second video clip, so you can watch it. And, and you do have the opportunity to dispute through a hearing, but the video, I think, pretty conclusively makes that case one way or another.
Well, if I could just, one more. Did you want to add on that, Chief?
Can I please, just not to lose your train of thought, but keep in mind that there is a four-second yellow on a 50 mile an hour speed zone.
Right.
And if you're doing the speed limit, I think if, I don't have my pneumograph in front of me, but I'm going back to my old days in the patrol division, but I think that you have 650 feet from the first point of perception to the time the light goes red. And that's quite a bit of time, of speed, and if you're paying attention, you should be able to safely negotiate that with not entering that intersection at a 0%, 0 time limit.
Okay, which, which really now brings up another interesting point, which, I noticed on one of the slides you had, it showed, you know, that the speed, you catch the speed that's going through too. And I'm guessing we will have that set up too. Can you issue them a ticket if they go through the intersection too fast?
No, we can't.
So we won't be able to issue them a ticket?
We are limited on this for red light violation only.
Strictly red lights?
That's correct.
That's a shame, because, because there's a, there's a lot.
Two for one.
Well, just keep in mind, the state of Illinois had to go through pretty much to do the speed zone, and, you know, that's a whole different thing there, which would have to be adjudicated in the circuit.
Well, what I would hope is it's somewhere down the road, I mean, once this is, once this is proven, because I know initially, a lot of people were against the, you know, the cop in a box, okay, you know, the Track Guard system, that it proves out that it definitely does work, and it does reduce the problems, and that hopefully, Chief, you and your staff will look at other intersections within the city, you know, to, at a future date to come back with and say, you know what, maybe we can do that at these intersections as well. I mean, I know that...
This is a bold step, but like anything else, though, we try to be an innovative police department, use our time efficiently and effectively, and as the program progresses and we monitor the effectiveness and not only from a cost standard, but also by a reduction of violations, that would obviously expand.
Good, good.
Alderman Coles, do you have some?
I have a question. On returning of going left, to take a picture of the car with a car right behind it and a car in front of it, how are you going to get the plate unless you have a camera on the other side to take the picture?
You mean on the...
On a turn, on a turn on the left.
Yeah.
You've got a semi, you have two semi moving, and then you have two cars on one side. One was, in fact, the semi was in the right-hand lane, and the first car was stopping to turn in the second lane. And how are you going to pick that? You're probably...
Candidly, there will be times, and it goes into the business rules that we talked about, where you can't get the license plate. We usually call those obstructions. It's not many, particularly with a, with a system in both the front and the back. But you should have a good shot at getting it one way or another, but there will be times, just to be completely candid, where, I know the situation you're talking about in the video, there was a truck that ran, and then there was a car that came in. You might have, in that situation, been able to pull that plate off the rear camera. You certainly wouldn't have been able to get it off the front. So there will be, and those are part of those, the reject categories that we look for, that we talked about.
Because there's a lot of issues, you know, cars sitting there waiting to turn, and the guy comes right up to you, bumping, and there's no way you can see the license plate. So, they both get away.
Yeah, well, but remember, you got a shot both at the front and the back, so...
The camera's going to be mounted, the camera's going to be mounted, this one's only going to be east and west. This one's going to have anything north and south.
No, not north and south, but...
So you're picking up the front license plate, will be passed your camera.
Well, no, you, with a, with a, with a front rear system, each system, the eastbound, let's take eastbound as an example, will have two cameras, one in the rear, one across on the westbound side as well. So on the eastbound, let me think if I can get it straight here, on the eastbound approach, you would have your rear camera, which would be located on the northeast corner approximately 85 feet back, and you would have your front corner, your front camera actually on the, excuse me, your rear camera would have been on the northwest corner. Am I getting that right? Yes, I am. And then across the way, you'd have your second camera. So each system, the eastbound and four system has two cameras with it.
All right.
Yeah.
I agree that this could go through. I mean, that place is a nut house, especially around 3 o'clock.
Alderman Subak, you have a question.
Chief, is that, when you turn left there, is it only on the arrow, or can you do it on the green?
Can do it on an arrow and a green.
So, there are going to be situations, if you go out on the green, that it turns red, and you have to wait to make sure that people coming the opposite direction are going to stop on the red. So we might be issuing citations where the people are going to, I guess my question is, our officers are going to look at the whole video to make sure that the person didn't violate it because they needed to do it for safety reasons.
Once again, you look at the totality of the circumstances before making a decision. It's one of the reasons why we review it at our level.
What's the percentage of hearings in other states that people have requested?
It usually ranges, excuse me, it usually ranges from 1 to 5%, depending on the fine level in a particular state and what other enforcement tools are available.
And what does state law requ... That's fine, I'm sorry to cut you off. What does our state law allow for fines? Because I think $100 is too low.
I believe it's, I believe your state law right now allows for a $100 base fine, and then the ability, in a default situation where the person doesn't pay, to double that fine to $200.
So we can't start with the initial fee of 125?
I don't believe that's the case right now, but that could be confirmed in the state legislation.
Then there's two follow-up questions. One, on the, on the contract term, it is a big output from us, and it is a pilot program. I think it's, instead of doing three years with a two-year option, I would want to know what your objection would be to a two-year to start with a three-year option, because, you know, what if all of a sudden the state law changes, or we don't get as many as we thought, or there's more obstruction? We still have a three-year commitment, where I'd rather have a two-year to start and then a three-year on the backside.
I don't know, do you want to address that, Chief?
I believe that that's why, one of the reasons why we're asking the committee to send this to the council for approval for the manager and I to negotiate with ACS.
Well, I'm asking the ACS rep, would he agree to a two-year with a three-year option?
Got me on the hot seat. We have to depreciate the equipment. We'd obviously prefer a three-year base term if it, if it's something that, with, and then the option years at the city's discretion. There will be a T for C clause in the contract, as always. My preference would be three years if it's, if it is, it's obviously something we could talk about further.
Yeah, I just think with the amount of money that's, you know, it's 100,000 a year, I think the two-year is safer. My last question is for Monica. Did we ever look at Third Avenue and, or Oak Meadows Drive and Route 83?
Alderman, at this time, that's the county jurisdiction, unless we were, they were willing to give that to us, we couldn't touch it at this time.
I mean, no, we have Benciville on one side, Addison on the other, and Wooddale. To me, that'd be a great, because that's a horrible intersection in itself.
Really, all the accidents that are occurring at that intersection are covered by the DuPage County Sheriff's Department.
Okay.
I wanted my turn, but Alderman Shauky, go ahead.
Last question, if I may. The videos, are they available for an accident report? And can somebody who was in an accident get hold of those videos for court or anything?
We could obviously provide them, and they can be downloaded off the system, obviously. But the property of this, all data and images that are captured by the system, excuse me, are the property of the city, so it'd really be up to the city to decide how they wanted to utilize the evidence that's recorded by the systems.
So if need be, if we wanted to, we could charge for that. Thank you. Okay, my question is, can anybody tap into this website and watch the fun?
If you... The, the, the base program database is, is, that has all the personal information associated with it, including when the registered owner records come back, the dispositions that are entered in hearings, et cetera. All of that is, is, uses a HTTPS protocol, a secure protocol over the web, and is username and password protected. So only people as designated by the police have access into the data, portion of the database that includes personal information, such as the DMV records that are obtained. And those access levels can be modified for particular individuals, so you can say that this person should only be able to see this part of the database versus another. That set aside then from the public website, which we showed you, and the distinction that I'll make there is, yes, in theory, if someone else got that PIN off the notice, they could go in and look at that, those images and videos, but we don't include, you might remember, if we can pull it back up again, any names, names or addresses or other personal information on the public website.
Well, that's good, but anybody who gets a violation, gets a PIN, all he has to do is figure out the sequence of PINs.
No, the PIN, the PIN numbers are randomly generated. So, you, you, you could probably crack it, but you'd have to spend an awful lot of time doing it.
Not interested. If there's no other technical questions, Mary, you have one?
A couple for the chief. Chief, you talked about how unsafe the intersection is. Would you remind everybody on IDOT scale what the functioning level of the intersection is? And as a result of the implementation of this program, do you expect the safety to increase at the intersection?
Well, once again, as Officer McGrath covered, we'd like to try to see if we can decrease the violations in that intersection by 30% the first year and decrease the accident rate by 20%. Once again, you know, when you're looking at those numbers, that might be a little, a little ambitious the first year, but hopefully, we're hoping that over a span of two to three years, we'll definitely see a reduction. However, I would like to remind you that from our experience with Track Guard, and I have to go back to what I know, I have not seen a reduction of violations at that particular device since it's been installed, since it's been working. For some people, for some reason, just people don't seem to get the message that they have to take their driving serious. And even though we are a little bit ambitious with where we want to go with our goals, I have to look, past performance is an excellent indicator of future behavior. And once again, with Track Guard, all I can say is it just seems that our violation rate, and we maintain the same business practices as that is when we started it in 99, just don't seem to be going down, and people don't seem to get the message. Driving is a serious matter. Once again, that intersection cost us one life already, and we have to do what we have, what we can to get in front of this to keep the next one from happening, or at least be able to say we are trying to make it a more safer place for people to come through.
On IDOT scale, isn't that intersection functioning at Level D, borderline F at rush hour?
Yes, it is.
Okay.
And I didn't know where you were going with that question.
Okay. And changing subject a little bit, prior to the implementation of this, assuming it's approved, are we going to do a public information campaign for our own residents announcing the existence of the system and prepping them for...
Keep, keep in mind that we are under some, some, there's some IDOT standards that we have to make. One of them is publicizing the fact that we are going to be doing this, obviously.